Can I call the meeting to order? Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Good evening and welcome to the January twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three meeting of the Westport Select Board. I'm not aware of any acknowledgements or recognitions. Does anybody know? So we'll move on to the public hearing. We have a request from the Acocksit Club Inc. and Acocksit Club Inc. Doing Business as the Pro Shop to accept the change of manager and officers for two thousand and twenty-three. The manager Betty Jill Tate, President Christopher Thompson, Vice President Betty Jill Tate, Treasurer Matthew Forbes, Clerk Rebecca Merchant, Directors Peter Briggs, Michelle Carney, Stephen Carney, Thomas Coughlin, Duncan Love, Jonathan Monge, Sean Maloney, Alicia Patterson, Peter Rosenfeld, Andrew Wheeler, and Maureen Woolam. This is just the normal yearly change in managers and officers for the club.
So moved. Second?
Is there any discussion?
May I just point out, I used to be the treasurer here. That's no longer, so I am able to vote on this one.
Thank you. Any other discussion? You don't have anyone from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous with one absence. We have a request from Jim Hartnett, the Town Administrator, to appoint Bernadette Oliver as the temporary town clerk effective February twenty-one, twenty-three. So you'll recall that Bernadette has announced her retirement, and we have since hired an assistant clerk. Bernadette was gracious enough to extend her clerkship till the end of January, but she really wants to retire. But we also really need a town clerk, so do you want to talk about this, Jim?
Yes, she's agreed. We actually looked at another town clerk, retired town clerk that does this for a number of communities. He came down to the town and unfortunately decided not to fill in for a couple of months leading up to the April election. So Bernadette, which very appreciative, has agreed to fill in. She'll be working roughly twenty hours a week. She doesn't need to be off the rolls for one payroll when she retires, so her start date would be April, I'm sorry, February twenty-first, and she could get us through the election. And I think it goes for a week or two after the election because the town clerk is, new clerk is sworn in, not that night like other members, but a week or two after. So I would recommend approval of the temporary appointment of Bernadette. Again, I think she'd like to be on her way, but she's, she doesn't want to leave the office empty, so.
Yeah.
That's good.
I'll move it also with a letter of thanks for stepping up and helping us out.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous with one absence. We have a request from Excel Recycling to remove Charlene Garcia as public wearer and to appoint Emily Nickerson as public wearer.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous with one absence. We have a request from the Council on Aging to accept the following donations: fifty dollars Ralph Urban donation for best use, ten dollars Gloria Bellosa for outreach, five dollars Ora Kehf for outreach, five dollars Anonymous Outreach, twenty-five dollars David Dietz for equipment use, a hundred dollars Westport Women's Club for technology totaling a hundred ninety-five dollars.
Motion approved. Second?
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous with one absence. We have a request to approve the employment agreement of the Principal Assessor, Theodora Gabriel. Jim, you want to talk a bit further on?
Yes, Theo's been in the Assessor's office, I think, for three years now. Her contract is up in March. Her employment agreement is up in March. She's discussed the employment, a new employment agreement with her, which is essentially the same agreement that was in your folder, the changes are in red. It included two percent raise for this year, next year, and the following year, which is fairly standard. I think the only other difference would be that in the benefits, the education incentive is that, which has been given to the other department heads as well. So I would recommend approval. She's been great down there. Certainly don't want to lose her.
Motion approved. Second?
Is that two percent per year?
Yes.
So total six percent by the third year?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. We have a request from Matt Armando, Board of Health Director, to recommend approval of three positions to be hired under the Board of Health Shared Service Grants to the Personnel Board. Do you want to talk about this one?
Maybe coming tonight. I want to give them two minutes.
Okay. They're coming. Okay, so. We are like zipping through the agenda. Let's skip on to the next one for a moment. So we, oh, they're here. We're ready for you. Matt?
Matt?
We're ready for you guys.
Yeah.
We zipped through the agenda, so feel free to please come forward.
That's a start, didn't you?
So we have a request to recommend approval of the three positions under the Board of Health Shared Service Grants. We have Tanya Wright into the Board of Health and Matt Armando, the Public Health Director. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for rushing through for us. Okay, so we're here. Did you all get the memos and everything?
Oh, wait. I think, did we get it last week? I don't see it in here, actually.
It is on.
Is it in the files? Under where?
It's not under three.
Yeah, I don't see it.
Tell us about it.
You can tell us about it.
Okay, so I guess I can read it. So these positions that we're requesting for the Public Health Excellence Grant, so the Board of Health is seeking Select Board and Personnel Board authorization to create and post and hire the following positions to support the South Coast Public Health Collaborative, which is a grant-funded program to enhance public health services among six communities with Westport as the lead community. So the first position that we'll look into creating and hiring is what you call a shared services coordinator. In this position, it'd be a non-union employee position, subject to continued grant funding. And the shared services coordinator will work on regional, on a regional basis to develop an understanding of local public health systems and services across the six communities, to identify and facilitate processes, improvements, and opportunities for collaboration within the systems and services, ensure coordination between the participating health departments for the ongoing shared service initiative, and lead efforts to secure resources for ongoing work within the collaborative. So that's position one. The second position that we'll look into hiring is a shared inspector trainer. And this again would be a non-union employee position, subject to continued grant funding. And so that person would be, will serve as an expert on environmental public health for the collaborative communities and will perform environmental inspections, reviews, provide guidance and supervision to member communities on issues related to environmental public health in their communities. Will also provide and supervise training and support to member communities and their staff in updating their respective environmental public health programs. So for both these positions, a review and classification of the proposed positions was performed by Town Council and the Mass Association of Health Boards, the Town Administrator, myself, and Tanya. And then all the funding for this comes from the PHE grant funds. It'll be used to cover the staff salaries, benefits, travel, payroll taxes, as well as related expenses such as legal, expenses, consultants, program supplies, and related equipment and software. With all this, the lead community, which is Westport, we receive fifteen percent of the annual grant amount to cover the town administrative costs, which in this case is equal to forty-five thousand for the annualized for the year.
Jim, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Just, we tried very hard to simplify this and create positions with the Town Council, and there was really no way around it. I think we have to create the positions. Positions will be funded entirely through the grant. The fringe benefits will be included in the grant funding as well. So there should be no cost to the town. It's a good program. We don't want to lose the funding, so I would recommend approval. These positions would not be union positions. So it would still need to go before Personnel Board for their review. I would recommend approval subject to Personnel Board. Would you want to?
Would these be employees of our town or state employees?
They need to be employees of the town. We tried doing it as contract work. It's a return. We looked at other options. There was just no other option that would work.
If I may follow up a minute here. Would that mean we incur potentially pension benefits down the road or retiring medical benefits as well?
Yes. So the initial benefits, the fringe benefits have been included with the grant on long-term time and obviously would not be included.
What do you mean by long-term retirement?
So if they work here for three years and they work for another community for ten years, they're obligated for those three years to cover some of the costs for retirement. And they're putting in for their own time, so what that cost is, I'm not sure, but there is a cost that every community has liability for.
But, you know, we're getting the fifteen percent, whatever. I wonder if that would cover these benefits as well? I mean, it does, but is there enough payback to cover this and make it worth our while nonetheless?
While they're working, it definitely covers long-term. It's tough to say. This is a three-year grant. We're hoping to get free revenue. It looks like it's going to get revenue.
All right, I'm not against it. I should give it a try. I was just curious about that because that would cause me some concern if we had long-term liabilities for a program that's really not all appropriate, doing it as a provider for somebody else.
Is there any further discussion?
Well, yeah, I'll move this.
With the recommendations that we made. All right, I'll second.
The motion is second to recommend posting of the position subject to the Personnel Board approval. Other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous with one absence. Anything else you guys want to cover while you're here?
So we're on Wednesday night for the Personnel Board for the review, and then I'm not exactly sure. It's been a while since I've been to that board, what the process is. So if they prove it right there, if they do, then we'll move forward with posting it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, both. All right, thanks for showing up to the meeting. D and D meeting. Part of our contention last week.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Phil was there for the pre-meeting with Dartmouth, too.
Okay, very good.
Yep, thank you. We have a request from the Planning Board for twenty thousand dollars for the Bristol County American Rescue Plan Act funds for the Route Six zoning project. Jim, do you want to remind us that this is?
Sure. So the board previously approved thirty-five thousand dollars for zoning study along Route Six corridor, the design of the sewer and water. One of the issues was, you know, what will the zoning be to incorporate? The benefits of that as well as monitor and regulate uses in that area. The original proposal was for thirty-five thousand dollars, but that will include work from the four of the lines from Route eighty-eight. Some additional twenty thousand will include consulting fees for the entire corridor for Route Six.
And I think, and our booker has just been looking at these. We've looked at this and we're recommending approval, I believe.
Yeah. I'll move it with you what I said, so I need it.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous with one absence. We have a request from Attorney Kathleen O'Donnell to approve the waiver of option to purchase an agricultural value, the property located at two hundred fifty-three Adamsville Road, Westport, Assessor's Map seventy-eight, Lot Two. This is the one where we have the right to purchase or assign a rights to purchase every time the property transitions, right? So it's already been protected.
Yes.
Anything we need to know about that?
No, the property's been protected. This is just a sale, so the town has the right, first refusal to assign that, sign those rights to somebody else. We still maintain those rights if it's over again in the future. I did check with the Land Trust. They said the property is protected and there's really no other further protection we could do on it. So this just waves the time period to allow them to close and show up here. The state has already waived one hundred twenty days on their side.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move it.
Second?
Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous with one absence. We have a request from Carol Freitas, the Veteran Service Officer, to accept a hundred dollar donation from J and S Restaurant Enterprise Doing Business as Cozy Knicks for Veterans discretionary use.
Motion approved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous with one absence. We have a request to amend the Diamond Regional High School debt exclusion question for the April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three vote. So this original vote, when we talked about it, we had kind of an explanation there about what that meant. And legals advised us, we can't have such a lengthy explanation of what that means. So Dick and Jim, you guys were working on perfecting it, right?
Well, we thought we had reached perfection and then this went away like the morning mist.
Yes, so we really did try to put more explanatory text, but it's not allowed.
I think the other questions on the ballot had it. That's why we wanted to do it.
We do have a brief, like, not at this moment, there is a little brief. A yes vote means, a yes vote means that the excluded funds will be used. A no vote means that town.
So we can leave that?
Yeah, that part. The town will be obligated to do it from the operation budget. So there is a little bit more than there was on there last time, but it's still not a lot. So this is something definitely, whatever, if anybody has any creative ways of getting to town residents about on the April vote, it's going to be on the April ballot again, and it's really, really going to impact the town budget if it, one way or the other, if it impacts one of the town budgets.
We can get it out there, but it needs someone to explain what you said.
Yeah, so we'll put the revised language once we vote on this, right? We'll put the new update on the web. Is it already on the website? Or will it be on the website? Okay, so we'll get the revised languages that we're about to vote on on the website.
And the explanation will go on the website as well. It just can't go on the ballot.
Yeah, so we'll put that lengthier explanation.
I'm here.
Yeah.
I was saddened by this, but all is not lost. Jim had done some work with our lawyers about what can we as elected officials say about this? And we have some rights here to give explanations that town employees, for example, could not employ. Basically, we cannot use any town resources, but any of us could speak to the issue. We could write letters to the editor. We could go to meetings and so on and so forth. So there is some opportunity for us to do some things and get the word out. It just has to be divorced from the town itself. And not what we're looking for, but I think we should take it upon ourselves to do as much as we can under the law and make sure that with our attorneys that we're staying within bounds. But I think there's, there are some things we can do to get the word out. And hope the press will pick up on it. And I don't think, I don't know about the website, though. That's a town resource, so we probably have to double-check that. I hope we can, but I'm not so sure from what I have read. But anyway, I just throw that out for discussion.
So you're thinking we might not be able to put the longer explanation on it? Did Dickens weigh in that we could do that?
I will check on that. We may be able to do that, because I don't know if we're promoting one way or the other. We're just providing information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the guidance is pretty clear. I have it with me, actually, but it's, you know, it's just a number of steps, and you can do this, you can't do that, you can do this, you can't do that. But there are a number of things that we can do to get the word.
There are things that we can say and do that Jim and Paula can't.
That's right. That's right.
All right, so I have entertained a motion to amend the Diamond Regional High School debt exclusion question as discussed.
So moved. Second?
Is there any discussion?
That'll also be referred to by the council before we send it down.
Okay, good. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous with one absence. Our favorite topic, the budget, the budget and possible override. Do you want to?
So we don't have a lot on this tonight. Just the budget itself, we're still waiting on the school department. They're finalizing their budget. Right now, we're probably about a million dollars apart from what I originally recommended and what they've been asking for. I know they've been working on it to see if they can reduce it further. I think at some point, we'll have to make a determination as to whether free cash is going to be used to supplement their budget or our budget. They'll be going before the Finance Committee on February seventh, which is one day after our next meeting.
So we've had a group that's asked to be on our February sixth meeting to talk in more detail about an override, right? So we'll certainly put that on the agenda for February sixth. I know Dick and I had kind of an informal working meeting with some people from the school department. Jim was there. Was there a Finance Committee person there?
No, there wasn't.
So we had kind of an informal conversation where they're upset that we started with the base that we had last year and not the end, what they got in town meeting, and, you know, it's fine. But we did talk about, they are going to be asking for, probably going to be asking for an appropriation for free cash, and so you're kind of judging the temperature. For me personally, I told them I would support up to about five hundred thousand in free cash, but I didn't love it, and I'd like to see if there's other options. And I wasn't speaking for the board. That was just me. So we have to finalize the budget by February tenth. So you just have basically a balanced budget at this point, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's with the original, original number to the school without the.
But without any changes to this one. Is there anything anybody wants to talk about with regard to the budget?
Yeah, in regards to the school matter, I'm just looking through the page that this is on in pamphlet booklet. But I wanted to just go over the numbers one more time here for the benefit of the law. I don't, okay, I should have put a tab on it.
Dick, excuse me. I'm going to step out for a few minutes. Can you take over?
Yes.
Thank you.
Jim, yeah, I just wanted to refresh our memory in view of the meeting we had as to what the number was of the budget. Okay, I have it here now.
What page is that?
I'm on page eighteen. And you had highlighted some of these numbers, which is very helpful. Appreciate it. So this one shows the Westport School Assessment, Westport Community Schools, and it also has the school assessments. And but we don't have any numbers in here yet. This is an old version. So I didn't take Paul's, your gracious offer, to get a new copy that was up to date. So what is, could you give me the, I have twenty million dollars down in what looks like the total line, okay?
Right, so the breakdown, we don't, we don't get the breakdown until, to a later date. We give them a bottom-line number. The breakdown, the actuals I get from previous years, but they get the bottom-line number. Right now, we're twenty million, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Last year with three hundred thousand dollars in free cash, they were twenty million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand. So we're about three hundred thousand above what they received last year, including the free cash, or six hundred thousand dollars for the school with free cash. And they were looking for roughly twenty-one seven, so about just one point one million dollars more than.
Right. And that's the number I was really looking for. And that's what we were talking about the other day. I was going to send you an email later to get their numbers, just so I could write them down. But I just wanted to say, Ashana mentioned her support of doing something with free cash. And I was greatly reluctant to do that, to support operating budgets. But we have to deal with our issues here. I didn't come to any number myself, but I did support, express support for doing something reasonable. And I think that was well-received by the schools. We all agreed it would be good to settle the issue, you know, before town meeting, so we don't have a floor debate. And that's what happened last year. And that was, I think, aided by the three hundred thousand that we had put in as free cash. So I support that in general, but the numbers remain to be seen. They thought that was a good gesture to get the conversations going. They did tell us, as Jim was there, so you'll recall it, they said that they wanted to figure out what cuts they have to make and try to make the budget work so that we could end up in agreement. So I think it was, I thought it was a very positive meeting, very business-like. And, but I didn't have, do you have any numbers from them that they gave you for that meeting that you could share with me?
Yes, I can email out to the board.
Just thought I had it to keep track of it. And I guess we'll probably have another meeting. We didn't say that, but I guess it's sooner. They were going to go back and look at some cuts and tell us what they're going to have to do to meet a budget of X, Y, Z, whatever. But we are a million dollars apart. If we do recommend cash flow be used, that can be cash, free cash, that would get us closer, but it's going to be tough to get to this million dollar. That's a big number. That's a big number. So anyway, but the number we have for the moment is twenty million, six three eight. Okay. And what, I don't have my, is that a two percent increase over last year? I see the number two here, and I see four point four. Are those percentages of increase?
Two percent of previous year.
I realize our listeners and viewers can't follow this that well, but it's more to come on this.
So four hundred thousand from previous year increase was about two percent. Look at a six hundred thousand dollar increase, probably three percent over last year without the free cash.
Yeah, yeah.
Less than two percent, a percent and a half for the free cash.
Do you know off the top, you had, if they were to achieve their budget of the additional million dollars, what percentage would be as an increase over the prior year? Probably like five or six percent.
Off the top of my head now.
Okay, yeah, it's academic today. We can worry about that later. But you should send me some of that material so I can go over it, so I'm up to date. But the point is, we've got a daunting task here, and we're trying to do the best we can. And we had a very, very good, business-like, harmonious meeting and said, look, this is a joint problem. We've got to work it out and see what we can do. And there's no hostilities of any kind, and we hope we can reach an agreement somehow. But it's, like I say, it's a daunting task to put it mildly. Okay, I'll continue.
As part of that, if there is an override contingent budget at town meeting, I also have to know how much will be allocated towards the school, how much will be allocated towards the town, and what portion will be, if any, put towards stabilization, how that works. So there's a few options that we can look at. And I know we're going to be discussing that at the next meeting in more detail. But that'll impact, we won't have a lot of time to put a secondary budget together, so.
So discussion of overrides really is a discussion for town meeting. And if it were to be successful in terms of the vote, people at town meeting expressing approval, it would be on the ballot at a later date, not to be confused with the diamond, which is on the ballot by the town meeting, April eleventh.
That's correct.
Yeah, I think some people have asked me about that. They were confused. So we've got to finish up the diamond business first, and I hope it goes well. And then we look at the, where we go from there in terms of overrides. You had given us some material at the last meeting. It was up on that board. I actually have that with me, so.
And these numbers are still moving. We don't have the assessments for the regional schools, our diamond at Bristol Ag. We don't have the state numbers. We don't get those until, we should get some preliminary numbers in the next few weeks. We won't get final numbers on those until actually after town meeting. We're also looking at, there might be some small amount of revenue from the marijuana facility on Route Six. Revenue projections for those facilities have decreased. Actual revenue decreased substantially for other communities over the last six months to the year as other places open. So that allowed a little bit, but nothing that's going to, I don't see anything that's going to substantially change the numbers that we have here.
Okay, just my final thought is, yeah, I see that you have for us on the February sixth agenda we'll be discussing with that group. Do you know who would be presenting on the area now?
I'm not sure who's going to read it. I'm assuming Ann leaves, but I don't know for sure.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we're just going over some of the school, the school items.
Thank you. Is there anything else on the budget?
I think we're pretty much done. I think we're pretty much done, unless you had something else.
Okay. The town minister report.
Route 177 roundabout is still moving, it's moving slowly. Mass DOT has required on a number of occasions additional information, we wanted an alternative analysis done, I think I mentioned that at a previous meeting, that was done, we're still having some questions or comments based on that, I think they're in agreement that the roundabout is the preferred option, and that they're looking for additional design, including a multi-use shared path on the north side of Route 177 within the project limits. As far as the schedule goes, they're hoping to have 25% design public hearing later this spring, so I'm not sure, it's usually held locally, Mass Highway runs that meeting, and we will advertise that and make sure that town residents and the buzz, especially in that neighborhood, know what's being presented for that design. These are slow projects.
No, if you stole my project, I was just going to say 177 is going to fall apart, it's going to have to go on the queue sooner or later.
All these projects, the times, Mass Highway projects, the design is three to six years, and then it's another two or three years to get it constructed, so it's still within that schedule, but it's a time-consuming process. Drift Road, small bridge replacement, spoke to power engineering, in contact with them over the last two or three weeks. This contract is actually with Mass DOT and not with the town, so power engineering is working with the Mass DOT, so it is their contract, they prepared a scope of work that they presented to Mass DOT, that went out last week, Mass DOT will review that scope and hopefully award them a design contract. We've had some interest from a number of residents down there that want to stay informed, I did send them a copy of the scope of work, it's still very early in the process, no design decisions have been made, they hope to have their base plan down within the next couple of months, which would just be survey, contour, some initial studies, and once they get that, they can start working on the design.
So, just to be, this is Kirby Burke.
Kirby Burke, yes, Kirby Burke.
It's the guardrail.
The guardrail.
Thought maybe there was another project that I should talk about.
No.
Hicks Bridge Landing, we received a grant from Seaport Economic Council, as well as an earmark from Representative Schmidt to redesign that parking area and boat ramp. GZA was hired to do that work, they've been working with the landing commission, they've done some geotechnical borings in that area, they've done some preliminary survey work, we should be seeing some preliminary design information in the next couple of weeks to move. Town Farm, we did get the oil tanks out, the two older oil tanks that were corroded, and the oil company, we don't want them to deliver oil to the farms, so we had to move on this rather quickly. The highway department was great, it was an old water tank, you can see in that picture, it was about 12 feet long, they were able to get out, that was a concern, because we had no other place to put the new tanks. They actually contracted with a concrete consultant, a concrete contract to support the floor, they did some of the work themselves, without them getting involved, we would not have got this done, but the new tanks are ready, we did go before the finance department, community emergency transfer, it was a big gap, it came under budget, so all is good there. Fire department wanted to mention that Chief Lieutenant Smith wrote a letter recognizing Deputy Dan Waldman and Administrative Assistant Haley Brown for acquiring over a million dollars in grant funding for the town in this federal studio. They're not the only department, there's been many grants that have been granted this year, State Department, Department of Health, County Department of Public Safety, they're going to find the final terms of funding sources.
I really recommend on social media, following the fire department, and I think it might be the union page and the fire department page, they're posting some, they've got a lot of information there about things that are going on. I think if people think the fire department is slow, they are definitely not slow. They delivered, somebody delivered a baby in an ambulance, did a baby, yeah.
Well, per Oskey, the same.
Yeah, it was.
There you go. I think they had 3200 calls last year, if I remember.
They've already had over 200, I think, I forgot the numbers, but they've already had over 200, it's January 23rd. Go ahead.
So I got, least department, most has done a number of grants, so I think everybody's doing what they can.
Yeah, we have some prolific grant writers, we have a lot of private citizens that are helping out with grants, we have the planning board just helping out, Amy and Michael. Okay, anything for Jim? There's the minutes of January 9.
I will move the minutes of January 9, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Report on the bill warrant. Bill warrant was signed and looked very nice, it was beautiful. So your committee reports or suggestions for future agenda, so Ian, you want to start?
I haven't had a meeting, I have a meeting next Wednesday.
Okay. Brian, continue.
We have a meeting Wednesday, along with the building committee, I did send Jim and Paul our draft of the ballot question hearing, and then the explanation for town meeting, which I believe we're going to be having a new planning board, some of the planning board on Wednesday for that meeting, to discuss the plan that they were having.
Yes, Mike Smith is looking at a community compact grant.
Yeah. So possibly include a community center with housing, with affordable housing, I mean, we could get some of it paid for by the federal estate grant, so we're going to look at that, and then I suppose we can, you know, I did send it to Paul Asser, disseminated it to the members, but expressly tell them not to send me edits, because that's a violation of open meeting law, and we'll do any editing we need to do on Wednesday, so that's all I got going on right now, so.
Thank you.
Cable's still banging away at the contract, trying to get as much as we can for the town, Val gave some good ideas too, so we'll push it forward with that, getting a meeting with the lawyer. Bikes is also going forward, the, you know, they got the grant for the little storage area at the transfer station, so we ask people to bring bikes there, we also need a member on the bike committee, if we have anybody interested in that. We have the DEP meeting the other day, we had a good turnout with Paul Smith, Jim Whiting, myself, Tony Riding, Bob Deela, it was a good model, Westport is there too, a few of whom spoke of that, some of the DEP Title V issue. Serpeth is this Wednesday, and then I hope to have a decent meeting on February 8th with the infrastructure committee, and try and get Serpeth to come and show their plans.
Thank you.
Just want to report, the capital improvements planning committee, we met, and we're getting along quite well, we picked the ones that are the most worthy in terms of capital projects, in our next meeting, which is now, we'll start to rank those, and as usual, the need for capital improvements is significant, so we'll have to do the best we can of selecting the ones that are most critical, so that's it.
Thank you. So we had a meeting of the internet advisory committee the other day, we are continuing to look at, David Cole is a powerhouse man on that committee, so we're looking at the, have you, we needed some info from KP Law.
I see another reminder today.
Okay, so I know I reminded, and you've also reminded, so we need input, we, there's no question in the committees group that we need a municipal life plan, that's the way you establish utility in order to pay for this, there's no interest in pursuing an enterprise fund for this. We also got an update on the town internet project that is in progress, so the fibers have been laid, but they're still trying to connect all the endpoints all the way to the end, so Keith is working on that, he was hoping in two to three weeks to be finished, so we'll see, so it's moving forward. The climate resilience committee also met, it's a very large committee, they also have a number of subcommittees, was really excited because we had a member of the high school environmental science club that came, and I thought the group did a really good job of welcoming the input from younger person, and she did a really good job about talking in a meeting, it's a little intimidating to do that. So mostly we're trying to find, there's so many good ideas that so many people have about so many different projects, and, you know, it all really comes down to money, you need money for any of these kind of grants and things, you need money for administrators who can actually chase all these things, because the planning board can't actually do it, so we've got some really creative people on that team, looking at a lot of grants, there's a lot of grants that they're looking at, so we'll probably be hearing from them for some ARPA money, for example. I already talked about the budget meeting, I also had to remind group and committee that email, one-way email is okay, replying to the email, not okay, so I know it's tempting, you were talking about what are we allowed to do in the ballot, if you're in a public meeting, you can one-way share information for a meeting, you can't two-way share, so be on the lookout for that, it's totally harmless, because people want, or it's innocent, I should say, because people are just trying to react to emails, but to open meetings are worth that way.
So whenever I send them, I always send that little, "Do not respond to this," and do not opine on whether or not you like it, and especially not to the group, if you want to, it's okay to talk individually between two people.
Sure.
Because that doesn't constitute a quorum, but once you get more than two people involved, or unless you're on a subcommittee that's tasked with, you know, discussing this and bringing things to the meeting, then it's not okay. People don't understand the nuances of it, you know?
And I have a quorum of people discussing something.
Yes, exactly.
Also, you should remember that it's public record, these emails, and so maybe you want to be careful what you're saying. Pretend a lawyer is reading it, or your mother.
My mother was reading.
Do you know, are we still hearing from the pile drivers? Pile.
I haven't heard anything, no.
We'll find out, because they're probably out tonight.
Yeah, just get the word every meeting out.
I might as well get tomorrow.
Yeah, all right, very good.
I know we picked up a couple.
We're being blessed with good weather, so that's good. Are there any comments or statements been posted? I do want to revise, remind people that nomination papers are available, there are a number of open seats for town office, so you can go to the town clerk's office, pick up your nomination papers, people who have picked up their nomination papers, I don't remember the deadline, but there's a deadline to return them, so.
You get at least a month for doing it.
Yeah, you get a month, but it's like February 10 or 12 or something, I don't know, check if you pulled papers, but there are a number of positions available, please check into it if you're interested. We are going to go into executive session tonight, but we will open after that only to adjourn, is there any topics before that that we should cover, anything unanticipated? Okay, I will entertain a motion pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, where the chair declares an open meeting will have a detrimental effect to A, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, Teamsters Local 251, discuss strategy with respect to the highway surveyor employment agreement, and approve the minutes of December 19, 2022.
Tom, move, Steve, move.
Second, Brian Velcourt.
Director, go, Ryan.
Aye, Steve, move.
Aye, Thomas Sheepbell.
Aye, Brian Velcourt.
Aye, Anne Boxler.
We are an executive.